I hereby open the regular session of the Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Landon.
Present.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Quavilla.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Bergen is excused this evening. I'm sorry, Commissioner McKinley is excused this evening. Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
And Commissioner Buck.
Present.
All right, thank you.
Works better if I take my mute off.
All right.
Right at this time, we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We would like to remind all, to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are three times to present public testimony tonight. First, we will have business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the Planning Commission on any subject that is not the zoning map amendment for six zero eight two Main Street or the Main Street Facility Plan. There will be separate times later this evening for the public hearing on those items specifically. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will now take business from the audience. As a reminder, this is a time to speak on any topic that is not the zone change application or the Main Street Facility Plan on the agenda tonight. If you are joining us online and wish to speak, please use the chat window. Please send a comment to the host with your name, mailing address, and the subject you would like to speak about. You can select the host only at the bottom of the chat window. Please do not use the chat feature for any other purpose during the meeting. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. For people calling in by phone, we will announce a time for those on the phone to speak. If you do not wish to speak, just state that you do not want to speak. We'll call the first agenda item zoning map amendment for two acres of property at six zero eight two Main Street.
Chair, before we get to that item, I think it'd be good to to give some time for folks to raise their hands if they have any business from the audience that related to the two items on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you. My apologies. Seeing nothing, shall we proceed to the first agenda item, the zoning map amendment for two acres of property on six zero eight two Main Street? Turn the time over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Chair. The zoning map amendment this evening is a quasi judicial public hearing. The role of the Planning Commission in a quasi judicial public hearing is to apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed and cannot vary from or change that law. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased in this matter. Before the start of the hearing, members of the Planning Commission will state whether they have any conflicts of interest such as family, financial, or business relationship with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, the commissioner will state whether he or she is without actual bias and whether he or she would like to step down from the planning commission during the case. Planning commissioners will also state whether they've discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have any independent knowledge of relevant facts such as from a visit to deciding question. If any planning commissioners have had such contacts, they will disclose the substance of that contact, and if they have independent knowledge of relevant facts, will summarize those facts. A witness may challenge the impartiality of a planning commissioner and may rebut the substance of a planning commissioner's knowledge of the facts. The commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge. A copy of the hearing procedures and agenda for this hearing and copies of the staff report have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. Any person with an interest in this zoning map amendment may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. If you want the planning commission to consider your testimony and to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council and ultimately to the Landes Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the planning commission closes the written record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so that people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal to the Landes Board of Appeals. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission to respond, to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the planning commission, you can ask the commission to hold open the record or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the planning commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any other reason, state law provides, we must hold the record open for at least seven days after it is closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of an application unless they waive that right. Please make sure testimony is related to the applicable criteria of approval. The criteria for zoning map amendment are in Springfield Development Code Section 5.22-115 Subsection C. The criteria are described in more detail in the staff report posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org and will be summarized by staff in the presentation this evening. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience from the phone or online or comments in the chat that are out of turn will not be part of the record. Please refrain from using the chat window unless you need to communicate with the meeting host regarding a technical difficulty or similar matter. Those joining the meeting online who wish to testify, when it is time for public testimony, should raise their hand on Zoom or press star nine if calling in by phone. During the public hearing, the host will ask those persons who wish to testify when it is time. Please begin any testimony by giving your name and mailing address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you wish the planning commission to consider, such as a copy of testimony, photographs, petitions, other documents or physical evidence regarding the zoning map amendment, please email it to Andy Limberd before the record is closed, and I will post his email address in the chat for reference. Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare any potential conflict of interest, expertise contact, or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
At this time, we will open the public hearing and go through the rule to disclose experte contacts or conflicts of interest. Commissioner Landon, I have no external contacts or potential conflicts of interest. Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to report one expertise or an expertise contact. I work for Cornerstone Community Housing, and it came to my attention that my, it came to my attention last week that my organization sent an unsolicited letter to the applicant regarding this property and whether the applicant would be interested in selling this property. And I also, it also came to my attention that a representative of the applicant reached out to my organization yesterday saying that they're not interested in selling the property to Cornerstone Community Housing. So just wanted to name that as a contact that I, that my organization has had with the applicant, but because there's no sale agreement, I don't believe that that raises, rises to the level of of a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Quavilla.
No potential conflicts of interest and no expertise contact for independent knowledge. I took a look at the site through Google Maps and I'll bring that up later when we talk about it and explain what it was about, just a brief visit.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill.
No potential conflicts of interest or expertise contact or other knowledge.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergen.
No potential conflicts of interest, no expertise contact, and no independent knowledge to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. You should with us tonight. Commissioner Buck.
I've had no expertise contact. I don't have independent knowledge. I do not believe that I have any potential conflicts of interest, although just for the record, I will state that I do work in the insurance industry and do business in Springfield.
Thank you. We'll turn the time now over to our senior planner, Andy Limberd, for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm just going to bring up a PowerPoint presentation to provide an indication of the location and nature of the site that's subject to the zoning map amendment tonight. It is a two acre site in East Springfield. It's just east of the intersection of Bob Straub Parkway and Highway 126 at Main Street, a couple blocks east of that location. So I'll make sure I didn't mute myself here. The property is rectangular in shape. It's about two acres, and it actually borders on the Thurston High School sports fields at the southeast corner of the Thurston High School site. A street is projected to run along the northern boundary of this property, and in fact, it kind of curls around and stubs into the extreme northwest corner of this property. And you can see to the east, there's another stub of A Street anticipated to be connected at some future time to provide alternate access to properties that are set back from Main Street and the rear of properties that are these lengthy rectangular properties for future development. So currently, the property is zoned low density residential, and the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to medium density residential. You'll notice that there's kind of a patchwork of low and medium density residential zoning in this area, and that is a result of adoption of the Metro Plan diagram in the 1980s. So about 1985 would have been when the initial Metro Plan was implemented, the contemporary Metro Plan, and through adoptions of the Metro Plan diagram, a strip of East Springfield, generally east of 58th Street and extending on both sides of Main Street, is designated for medium density residential zoning. Some properties elected to rezone upon implementation of the comprehensive plan previously, and so there's a kind of a, I don't want to call it a hodgepodge, but there's discontinuous zoning within this area of Springfield. The fact that this property is not zoned consistent with the adopted Metro Plan is actually an impediment to development. One of the criteria for further development or redevelopment of this property would be to have the zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan designation for the site. And so that is the request this evening by the applicant is to rezone it to be consistent with what the Metro Plan diagram does provide. And I do have a portion of the Metro Plan, the kind of the eastern half that is Springfield, and it's a little hard to see because of the coloration, but the arrows pointing generally to, you can see there's a blue rectangle, and that represents the Thurston High School site. And it's just to the south and abutting that between that and Main Street, there's an area of slightly darker tan color. It's a little hard to differentiate, but that does represent medium density residential designation and extends on both sides of this property and also north and south sides of Main Street. So clearly, the intent through the Metro Plan diagram is to designate medium density zoning in this, in this area of Springfield. That is the request that the applicant is making this evening to bring the zoning into conformity with the designation. That would facilitate future redevelopment of the property. It's mostly vacant and eligible for development upon rezoning. I did not have any responses to the mailed, posted, and advertised notification this public hearing. And I do know that the applicant and the property owner are here this evening attending the hearing, so I anticipate that they'll provide some words regarding this application, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have. And I'll just bring up the criteria for zoning map amendment for reference.
Chair Quavilla.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Landon. Um, a question for Andy, actually two parter. First of all, A Street is not a through street there, but A Street, there would be nothing that in this application that would impede A Street being completed across the northerly portion of this property. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I'll see if I can go back in the screen here to point out what you're referring to. Yeah, A Street tapers off and essentially becomes a partial street at the northwest corner of this property. Prior conceptual development plans that the applicant has shared with the city contemplates extending A Street at least half of A Street along the northern boundary of this property. Completion of the A Street connection is reliant on participation by the school district because a portion of the future right of way is within the Thurston High School site, and that has been contemplated somewhat with some of the driveways they've constructed with their softball facility. But there are, as you can see, there are other intervening properties that will need to participate and potentially redevelop. There is a portion of the northern end of this adjoining property that I believe has been dedicated as right of way. Should this property redevelop, there would be a dedication right of way, so it'd bring it more than halfway to its destination on the east side at 62nd Place. And so it facilitates access from a future redevelopment onto A Street to either come out as a designated intersection at 60th Place to access Main Street or to proceed westbound to the light at 58th Street, which would be allow for better turning movements, safer turning movements. One thing I can relate is it's likely that the existing house that is fronting onto Main Street would remain. It does have an existing driveway that also likely would remain, but the balance of the site, should it be redeveloped as residential, traffic would be directed to the north and out through A Street and 60th Place, not directed onto Main Street because of just the congested nature of that area and funneling a lot of traffic onto Main Street at a single driveway location is, could be problematic. So yes, you're correct. The intent is to eventually put A Street through and connect it as an alternate to turning off of Main Street.
Thank you very much. A second part of my question, and this will relate to my independent knowledge of the site through Google Maps, is that there appear to be a number of quite large specimen trees on site. And I was wondering if there's any way in the site plan in the future that there could be some conditions for retaining those trees as much as practicable.
Are you referring to the ones that are along the boundary with the properties to the west? There's kind of a north-south row of conifers?
Yes, and I also think there's some right where the lettering site is as well. The ones on the north side, I think that they're in the right of way, so they would probably have to go clear. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I guess depending upon how many trees and the, and the sizes of the trees, there would be requirement for a tree felling permit with redevelopment of the property. Some of the trees from my observation, the site appear to be, they may be some remnant orchard trees, especially in the southeast corner. And unfortunately, trees that are located sort of right in the middle of the site may be more difficult to preserve, whereas trees on the boundaries where there's normally planted setbacks anyway may be easier to retain. So the buffer between this site and the properties to the west may be more viable. We haven't seen concrete development plans, only a conceptual plan of how the site could redevelop. And of course, the applicant is here this evening. They've heard the comments expressed, and hopefully we'll be able to factor that into a future plan that's presented to the city.
Commission, for the sake of getting back on track, I took that one question a little bit prematurely, but we are going to, at this point, call for testimony. Planning Commission, you'll have a moment for questions just a little bit down the road. If you would like to speak about this application and are joining the meeting on the Zoom app, please send a message in the chat window to the host with your name, mailing address, and whether you are in favor, neutral, or opposed to the application. If you are joining us by phone only, you may press star nine to raise your hand to speak. Please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Please refrain, refrain also from using the chats in the application. So we're going to start with, if you would, participants in favor. Following that, it'll be neither in favor nor opposed, following that to opposed. So online participants in favor.
Chair, as a point of order, I believe the applicant gets an opportunity to give a presentation before we ask for comment from the public.
You are correct. I missed that. I apologize. We'll turn the time over to the applicant. Thank you for the correction.
Hi, my name is, you know, good evening, Commissioners and Andy. I am the, I'm Carol Shermer with Shermer Consulting. I'm the applicant's representative. My address is PO Box 10424 in Eugene, 97440. I'm just going to keep it brief. Andy did a fantastic job of presenting the project. I always feel like I learn something about my own projects when I listen to staff present my project. So thank you, Andy, and thank you for your help through the process. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet because I think you've heard most of it, and I'm mostly here to answer questions, but of course, I'm here in support of the zone change for many reasons. I mean, not the least of which, I'm the applicant's representative, so it would stand to reason I'm in support. But the other reason is that this brings the zoning in compliance with the Metro Plan, and if you haven't heard it a thousand times, we have a huge housing shortage, and this is an opportunity to provide much needed housing. We've got one house sitting on that property right now, and there's a potential for, you know, thirty or forty units. So I think it's a great opportunity. So that's all I have. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, call for testimony. If you would like to speak about this application and are joining on the Zoom app, please send a message in the chat window to the host with your name, mailing address, and whether you are in favor, neutral, or opposed to the application. If you're joining us by phone only, you can press star nine, star nine to raise your hand to speak. Please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And please refrain from using chat. Dustin McCluskey.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Very well, thank you.
Can I get the video there? Hi, so Andy Limber did an excellent job of articulating the situation with this property, and I think Carol did as well. So, you know, Carol can, can field any questions. She's, she's the specialist here, but definitely the intent is to add, you know, as much family type housing as we can on this property. In response to the questions about the trees, you know, I would love to, to preserve as many large trees as possible on this property while taking into account all the other, you know, factors here. Emergency vehicle turnaround is tough, but that's, that's definitely a goal of mine as we, we look through this. I don't know how much we'll achieve, but I would like to do that. And then, you know, we'll plant large trees to replace, you know, what we take out. Those will grow over time, but we'll do what we can on that. And other than that, just thank you guys for being here and all of you volunteers that make this possible. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Dustin, just to, just to clarify, Dustin is the property owner.
Appreciate that. Thank you again. We're looking for participants in favor of the proposal. Seeing none at this time, participants neither in favor nor opposed. Seeing none, we'll now take input from those who are opposed to the application. Please raise your hand. Seeing none, do we have any participants by phone with questions or comments?
Chair Landon, I don't see anybody who has joined us by phone.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we will turn the time over to our senior planner for staff response.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This procedure is something that the city sponsors a couple times a year upon request by the property owner. In order to minimize the cost and complexity to the property owner, this application is being presented as a correction to a planned zone conflict, and by correcting the zoning to bring it into conformity with the Metro Plan diagram that facilitates the next step toward development of this property with residential units. There would be a site plan associated with future development on this property. So there is another opportunity for the neighborhood adjacent residents and owners to review the type and configuration of development that's proposed on the site. It would likely be something in the, in the order of low walk-up apartments or townhouse units, something similar to what is already in that neighborhood, multi-unit residential along the north side of Main Street. We have seen actually some recent projects just near this location as well. So that would be the anticipated type of housing. There's a range of potential housing units that would be allowable on the site, but that would be the next step. Again, public input would be solicited for that step. It would not require a public hearing. However, this is the step that is necessary to advance the development through a public hearing.
Thank you very much. We'll go through Commissioners by name. I have no comments. Commissioner Salazar, do you have any comment?
No, but I do believe I see Commissioner Buck's hand raised.
I do, I do. Commissioner Buck, please proceed.
Thank you. I had raised my hand before I knew we were going in, in order, so apologize for jumping the gun. Thank you, thank you. Just as a point of interest to me, I'm curious as to the, the concept, you know, and Andy commented on this in his presentation briefly, but I'd like to hear just a few more little more from either Carol or Andy about the concept around the increased traffic load and forty car, forty units means more vehicles and those kind of things. And not only is there the high school property, but there's also an elementary school several blocks away, and not that it can't be managed. I'm just curious as to how that's factored in to, to this plan.
Thanks, Commissioner Buck. I believe that the intent and the ultimate transportation network in this area, which includes connection of A Street, is intended to bring traffic from Main Street and distribute it and to provide parallel access opportunities along Main Street. So with their, by the, with the future connection of A Street, it provides multiple opportunities for vehicles to kind of disperse and then access Main Street, which is the primary east-west arterial street. But from that point, people could be going east. But from that point, people could be going east or west. It depends on their ultimate destination. There are signalized intersections nearby. And then, of course, we have Bob Straub Parkway and Highway 126, which can convey traffic, you know, to the greater metro area. So when the Metro Plan and the city's transportation plan were developed, it anticipated higher densities along this section of Main Street. By keeping the access direct off of Main Street, it, I guess, prevents and increases safety factor. It's not directing all of the vehicle trips directly out onto Main Street. It allows them to disperse into parallel streets along along Main Street. And you are, I mean, you are correct. There will be increased traffic in the area, but the intent is to complete and it is desirable to complete the transportation connections. A Street representing one of those important connections. And that also brings traffic away from the school itself to reduce conflicts with with school traffic in that in that regard.
And is is the completion of or that extension of A Street? For lack of a better, I'm not sure the right terminology here, so forgive me, but is that is that a condition that's that's part of this that that get extended at least to the boundaries of that property?
Yes, provision for the street would be that would be a necessary step, a condition for the development or or further development of the property because access cannot be derived from Main Street for additional units, only the existing house. They would have to develop at least the southern half of that street in order to provide for for that. So it does represent, you know, a couple hundred feet further east extension of A Street. Eventually, A Street will be connected through. And once this site develops, there may be focus on the other properties just to the east that are similarly situated. And you know, market forces may dictate that A Street is connected and they redevelop as well. But the city is not prompting that. Certainly would be receptive to it, but it's the city is not actively trying to push A Street through. We'll hopefully get it in due time because these areas are ripe for redevelopment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coivela, do you have anything to add? Commissioner Gill.
Just thanks to staff for a useful report.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions similar to Commissioner Buck's questions. The intent of the traffic being diverted through A Street eventually. Will there still be access from Main Street and will they utilize the driveway that is on that the current home site is using right now? My my thought is if we have forty vehicles for emergency access for fire trucks, I know there's a a fire station nearby and I'm just curious what the logistics of that look like. Going from having one unit on this property to forty, potentially forty. That's something that I was interested to hear about.
Sure. And that's a good question, Commissioner Bergen. One of the design considerations that staff looked at was an existing driveway approach that's not currently utilized. It's kind of almost a dirt track that is on the kind of the southeast edge of this property. Could potentially be retained and used only for emergency vehicle access, which allows for an emergency vehicle to maneuver into the site from the future extension of A Street and then either acts, you know, egress or or access from from the Main Street side, likely with some type of a bollard or a removable gauge or something. So it eliminates the need to have a turnaround because the property is so deep and if without any access requiring of, you know, if a fire truck requires a turnaround, it eats up a lot of property, a lot of real estate that it could otherwise be used for housing. So one of the design considerations is to keep the existing driveway just for the house. So it served just that single detached house. Another driveway could be developed only for emergency vehicle use, so it would be hopefully never used. But if it is used, it would be only in the event of a rapid access by the fire department. And then typical ordinary resident traffic would go through the driveway and onto A Street. And then, you know, get onto Main Street or wherever the destination is within the neighborhood. So that was seen as a possibility. Again, that's something that have to be detailed and vetted with ODOT. As development plans are prepared and then distributed and for referral by our various agencies. But that may be a viable option. It's kind of a win-win both for the developer to retain unit area within the within the property and not dedicate too much to pavement and also to allow for rapid emergency access. Should that be needed, it could come directly from Main Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McGinley, did we get you all ready? Is she? Commissioner Buck, any final comments?
No, thank you very much.
I might add, by the way, I live fairly close to that area and getting that small section of street connected, I think, makes a lot of logical sense. It's never going to be a major throughway. It's just not built that way. But getting that so that it will so that it will connect as a secondary access, I think, makes a lot of sense. At this time, would the commission like to close the public hearing and or public record or continue the hearing and hold the record open to another date? Do I have a proposal?
Chair, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing and the public record.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Move by Commissioner Salazar, second by Commissioner Buck. All in favor? Show of hands. Two, three, four. It looks to be unanimous. So I guess I don't need to ask for opposed. The motion carries. Let's see. I move, I'm probably, and Sandy, you're going to have to help me out, one of your folks. I move to adopt the order approving the order that is in the agenda packet as attachment three for this item.
Mr. Landon, I believe the next step would be any discussion amongst before someone makes a motion to adopt.
Okay, I surely appreciate the the help because I'm getting going here. Okay, so discussion of the application or are we ready for a motion?
Chair here, no discussion. I'd like to move that we adopt the order approving the order that is in the agenda packet as attachment three for this item. Case eight, one, one dash two, one dash zero, 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 three, two, six dash T Y P three. Second.
I'll do a roll call vote on this. I vote in favor. Commissioner Salazar.
Hi.
Commissioner Coivela.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Hi.
Commissioner Bergen.
Hi.
Commissioner McGinley is not with us tonight. Commissioner Buck.
Hi.
We have, let's see, six eyes, no nays. Motion carries. I believe we'll head on to our second item tonight. Tonight, the planning commission is holding a public hearing to hear testimony regarding the Main Street Facility Plan. The purpose of this public hearing is to develop a recommendation to the city council whether to approve, approve with modifications or not approve Main Street Facility Plan and associated amendments. If you are here this evening and would like to speak about this action, you will have the opportunity to raise your hand after the staff report. You will be called on to unmute yourself and speak. If you are on the phone, you may press star nine to raise your hand. Please keep yourselves on mute until you are called on to provide public testimony. I hereby open the public meeting. The order of proceedings for this hearing will be the report by staff first, followed by public testimony, then additional comments by staff. Could we please have the staff report? I have to apologize. Have I been on mute that whole time?
No, you're fine, Commissioner Landon.
My computer doesn't seem to want to let me share, so I'm going to see if one of my colleagues may be able to help me. Emma, perhaps?
Hey, Molly, what can I help put on the screen for you?
You could help put the presentation on the screen. That would be great.
I'll get that in a second. Thanks.
In the meantime, while Emma is doing that, good evening. I'm Molly Markarian, Senior Planner and the city's project manager for the Main Street Safety Project. As you all, I'm sure, recall, this is a collaborative effort with ODOT. And ODOT's project manager, Bill Johnson, is here tonight in the audience, as well as Franny Brindle, the Area Five Manager. I also have several project team members with me tonight. Brian Barnett, the city's traffic engineer, Michael Liebler, transportation planning engineer, Emma Newman, Senior Transportation Planner, and Laurel Lynn Spiro, our DPW Communications Coordinator. Next slide. Springfield's Main Street is consistently ranked as one of the most unsafe city streets in Oregon based on the severity and frequency of traffic crashes. ODOT and the city must address this problem to save lives, reduce injuries, and lessen property damage due to crashes. The purpose of the Main Street Safety Project is to select infrastructure solutions that will make Main Street safer for people walking, biking, driving, and taking transit. The selected safety improvements will provide for the movement of goods and people, support the economic viability of the corridor, accommodate current bus service and future transit solutions, and complement safety education and traffic enforcement. Next slide. Over the past nearly four years, our project team has built upon several prior planning studies to develop and refine recommended safety solutions for Main Street based on community input, technical analysis, and decision maker feedback. Over the course of this planning phase, the Springfield Planning Commission, Main Street Governance Team, and Springfield City Council have acknowledged community input and reaffirmed that there is a serious safety problem on Main Street, that it is ODOT's and the city's duty to address this problem, that the conceptual solution presented in the facility plan is sensible and responsible, and that we do listen and we do care. They've also emphasized the importance of continuing to engage community members and make adjustments as necessary during future design phases. The Main Street Facility Plan documents the outcome of this planning phase. An adoption of the facility plan would be the first step towards achieving the shared vision expressed by the Springfield community to create a safe and efficient Main Street for all users that supports multimodal transportation, viable businesses, and community vitality. Next slide. In developing this plan, the city and ODOT attempted to balance various competing interests and objectives. Input received from community members clearly indicated that the community believes it is important to address safety concerns on Main Street. Other input emphasized minimizing the impact on businesses and supporting economic development on the corridor. The full slate of goals and objectives informed by prior corridor studies and community input guided the development and evaluation of the toolbox of solutions to address the safety problem on Main Street. Next slide. The recommended toolbox of solutions presented in the facility plan provides flexibility in terms of applying different types of solutions in different sections of the corridor rather than a one size fits all approach. It also provides simplicity and feasibility and is intended to provide a balanced solution that the community desires. The primary tools are roundabouts, raised medians, and long-term street cross-section upgrades to enhance the safety and comfort of those walking and biking. Like to reiterate the median guiding principles outlined on pages seventy-one to seventy-four of the facility plan that we just have discussed in prior work sessions that would apply to the raised median design in design phases. And also like to note the pairing of roundabouts and medians for functionality and safety. If you recall from prior presentations, when combined, we could see a forty-eight percent crash reduction on the corridor. In accordance with the Community Engagement Plan approved by the Committee for Citizen Involvement, significant community input was considered in developing this plan as detailed on pages twenty to thirty of the facility plan. At each stage of the planning process, we shared outreach tactics completed and common themes that we heard from community members, including questions and comments from adjacent business and property owners about future site access and usage. I'd like to note that as part of our local access forum outreach, we created a dynamic map to document site access and usage concerns from the Main McBay Transit Study and Main Street Safety Project. We have continued to update this map and it will be passed on to future design teams to be considered along with the key principles and access management methodology, raised median guiding principles, transit design guiding principles, and potential base sex base cross-section modifications during future design phases. You will hear tonight calls for more process and more input. Please note that we have heard repeatedly from business and property owners the desire for more design details. But we cannot get to that level of detail until the facility plan is adopted and we seek funding for design and construction phase by phase. I'd also like to note that we have spent nearly a half a million dollars in staff time and other resources on community engagement during this planning phase. And it is our project team's opinion that funds spent on additional outreach should be focused on the design phase. Finally, I'd like to note that we sent information and opportunities for engagement specifically to adjacent business and property owners on the corridor on four occasions prior to the recent public hearing notice. We have asked some people why they chose not to engage in the various opportunities that we have provided, and we've heard a range of influencers, including lack of interest, last minute circumstances, other priorities, online format, and general agency distrust. Next slide. Leading up to tonight's public hearing, we have been documenting questions and comments received from the public as we have for all phases of engagement. Also, as also as we have done throughout the planning phase, we have responded to each commenter individually. For those comments submitted by Springfield Oregon Speaks, the staff response was shared with the planning commission via Springfield Oregon Speaks and via email to the commenter. This often results in subsequent back and forth emails and communications as noted in our other comment summary, along with a summation of our correspondence with others via themainstreetsafety.org website, email, phone, and in person. As of ten forty-five this morning, however, I had to stop addressing comments and inquiries and thus would request that the planning commission consider leaving the record open for another week so that our project team can respond to the comments, written comments received. so that our project team can respond to the comments, written comments received since then today. And then I would submit those comments and staff responses in the packet for your deliberations in March. I can skip the next two slides, given what I just described. And I just want to circle back to some information that we've shared in prior presentations as these topics have arisen again recently. We've been working to dispel misconceptions we've heard from community members about what this project is and is not. And as we've shared in the past, these are addressed in much more detail in fact sheet number five, which can be found on the project website at mainstreetsafety.org. This project has evolved over many years, and it's not just about pedestrian safety. It is not a lane transit district project. It's not about MX. It would not prevent all left turns. It would not need extensive new right-of-way. It's not one-size-fits-all, and it would not be built all at once. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair to start the public testimony.
Thank you very much. If you would like to speak about the Main Street Facility, about the Main Street Facility Plan, and you are joining the meeting on the Zoom app, please send a message in the chat window to the host with your name and mailing address. If you are joining us by phone only, you may press star nine to raise your hand to speak. Please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. If you did not provide it in the chat window, please keep your comments to three minutes. Call now at this time for public testimony from online and by phone.
Chair Landon, we see that Sean Highland has indicated that he would like to speak.
Okay, I'm glad you can see that. Thank you. Sean, please proceed.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
All right, cool. So our family owns the Highland Business Park located at forty-six sixty Main Street. And I believe my concerns have been addressed, but I just want to make sure the Planning Commission is aware. If you're coming into our business park, we have four buildings, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of rental space, thirty individual tenants that operate out of our business park with one entry in and out. And it would be a business killer for a median to go down Main Street. That would prevent, and I saw the slide that said not all left turns would be prevented, but and I was actually made aware that they would give me a left turn into our business park, but, you know, I just want to make sure, because I'm not the only one. I know of many businesses that have semi-trucks coming in and out of their facilities that will have to have left turns whichever way they're coming. So that's my biggest comment is the median. I'm pretty much against that. You know, our Main Street to me is a function of a lot of industrial, a lot of businesses. People need to get in and out of businesses. That's how they function. And if people can't get into a business, then people won't frequent that business. So with that, I'll say thank you and sign off.
Thank you very much.
So the next person listed in the chat is Danny Wright.
Danny Wright, please proceed.
Oh, Molly has done a great job on this. The biggest concern for business owners on Main is we've spent thousands of hours working on this. We've had lots of responses, but we don't feel like we've been heard. And that doesn't work when they're saying that they can get money to bail the design phase when they haven't addressed our concerns about minimal land taken from us. Even four foot would remove almost twelve parking spots, and I only have sixteen. So that is a very limited. And then one of the city council members asked about how to connect with the community. And the Facebook page that City of Springfield has put out had one comment on it, on their mainstreetsafety.org, where the one that KBAL posted last night, as of three o'clock this afternoon, had a fifty-nine responses and twenty-eight shares. So the City of Springfield outreach said that they reached two hundred and forty people in since, for what, three years, even with COVID, more people are spending their time online and they were unable to connect or find the City of Springfield page to comment on. So I don't feel like an outreach worked in a great area. With fifteen thousand cars a day on Main Street, there should have been billboards or placards, postcards, something that explained the process for people if they couldn't reach them through internet, et cetera, email, phone. And that's all I have to say is it's medians don't work when you have a business that relies on semi-trucks daily to deliver, and you have to have a flow of traffic to get through Main Street in a reasonable fashion so people don't choose another place to go. Thank you for your time.
Very much. Do we have anybody else in the queue at this joint, at this juncture?
Yes, we have Tim Johnson with Les Schwab Tires.
Okay, Tim Johnson.
And it's Tom Johnson.
Tom Johnson, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I am the manager of the Les Schwab Tires at Thirty-second and Main Street. And a large portion of our business is large commercial semi-trucks, multiple trailers, fifty-three-foot trailers. So I definitely have a strong concern as far as access to my facility, not only during the construction of the roundabout, but after the completion of the roundabout, what the access will be for those large vehicles coming in and out of our lot. And that's what I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. I believe next in the queue is Todd Fortier.
Yeah, Todd Fortier, Todd Sotterbody. Anyway, Molly, I thank you for your work, and I know we want to beautify Springfield. One thing that kind of gets my attention is you say to make Springfield safe. There's a seven-block area without a crosswalk, and there's a bus stop right in front of my shop, and I see people running across it every single day. That's a pretty simple thing to make our Main Street safer, and it's been like that ten years. That word we use, to me, we're using it just a little sloppy in the name of getting something done. Now, does Main Street need work? It sure does. You know, and I'd like to see us make it better, but there's small things we could do today that aren't costly that would help it be safer for the community. Thank you.
Todd, thank you very much. And next up is Kelly.
Chair Landon, can I interrupt? I am trying to get a message. Joe Tocotley has sent me a message separately, so he should be in line next.
All right, Joe.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. Joe, please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joe Tocotley. I live in Springfield, mailing address twenty-two thirty-seven Main Street, Springfield nine-seven-four-seven-seven. I'm the owner of McKinsey Glass at twenty-two nineteen Main Street. I attached a letter earlier to your meeting site with some comments. I would hope that you would read those comments and reflect on them and check into them. I wanted to speak to you this evening as well in addition, because there's been a development as of yesterday. KZI, I think Danny brought up the same issue, did a piece on this project and on this meeting, as a matter of fact, tonight. As a matter of fact, KVAL did another piece this evening that aired at about six o'clock. And I've been very, even though I've served on the Strategic Advisory Committee for this project, and I've been following this project for seven years or more, I've been very frustrated, and I've actually shared my frustration with city council members during one of their last meetings regarding this topic, that we are not engaging the community. I know the staff has done a lot of efforts, but maybe in vain. I simply put up two signs and attracted media attention, and their site blew up today on their Facebook site with a hundred and sixty-seven comments and multiple shares. And if you read those comments, which I did this morning, over ninety percent of them are in opposition of this project. So when the staff present to you in their report that their community outreach shows that these solutions is what the community desires, which Molly just stated that a few minutes ago, and that this reflects the values of our community, somewhere there's a disconnect. I'm not sure you're getting the picture. We're about to vote or move this project forward to city council. But I urge you, before you do that, to check into what I'm sharing with you this evening. I'm sure most of you are on Facebook. Just look up KZI, look up KVAL, and you'll see what I'm asserting here. In my other letter that I attached, also, there's another issue, and that is the SAC committee that I was a member of for almost three years, and attended five of the six meetings. And just so you know, the way that charter for that group started and the way it ended later on, we did not function the way that body was supposed to function. The SAC group was a very critical part of the planning of this project. And I don't believe, once the staff and the project team realize that there is a lot of dissent, even though they shared that in a seventeen-hundred-and-forty-two-page document to you, you're going to do a lot of sifting to find that information. I would urge you to go look into that as well. Thank you.
Hey, Joe, thank you very much. I believe next up, Brian Barnett, is that correct?
I think we should go back to Kelly Perkins as being next on the list.
All right, thank you very much. Kelly, please proceed.
Hi, yes. My only comment is I totally agree that there has not been enough community outreach on this project at all. I think when the mailers went out, I think it was last summer, whatever it was, you know, toting the crosswalks that were going in or whatever, didn't address a lot of the planning items like roundabouts and things like that unless you dug really deep looking for them. And I don't think that the average citizen was going that in-depth into this project. And I think that there is a lot of, a lot of folks like myself that are very anti these changes that you're proposing.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe next up is Susan Lee. Susan Lee. Hearing nothing, I believe. Next up is Dustin McCluskey.
What, can you hold on one second for Ms. Lee? We're trying to get her microphone working. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Sure, give me one moment.
Try it now.
It doesn't have to be video. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And I'm hearing, we're hearing you.
Hello, hello, everybody. This is Susan Lee. I own All-In-N-Out Market and five-zero-nine-five Main Street. All my biggest concern is in the Main Street, half of the parking lot is on Main Street, and then I have like either four or, I believe, a four parking lot on the east, and then about three or four in the Main Street side, taking a, if I losing four foot, and then I'm losing all front parking lot because this building is convenience store. We're getting a lot of big truck for delivery. That's my biggest concern. There is, you know, parking space for the trucks. Planning department willing to have, you know, I don't know how to explain, but they can park when they deliver the truck product. Do you guys understand? I'm sorry, my English is not that big, but you know, there is, there is truck can access and front parking lot. So I mean, if whoever are planning it, if a truck can park there when they deliver the product, then yeah, I will agree on that. But if there is no spot for trucking, then how do they get deliver the product? I hope, do you guys understand what I'm talking about?
I think so, yeah.
Yes, if you guys understand, then I don't have nothing to say. Like I said, this small convenience store, east side only have a four parking lot, front, which is a Main Street side, three, barely, three or four, barely, but losing a four foot, losing all that parking space. And then same time, in that four parking spot, truck parked there, delivered their product. But, you know, you guys are sure consider on that one order, they have to have run the bit. I don't run the business anymore, but they have to run the business to leave. So please, you know, if you guys can work with that, looks like I don't really have other choice. And that's all to say it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Dustin McCluskey.
All right, so kind of just coincidence that we're having this and mine the same night, but I was going to come on here anyway and speak. So McCluskey Cabinets on Forty-fourth and Main is my family's business. I don't work there myself anymore, but three generations of my family do. You know, it's a, and I grew up in the place. So it's a, you know, one of these businesses that fronts Main Street, just like this one that was just being articulated about. You know, it's got six, seven parking spots with very little extra room, four feet. I don't know, you maybe fit two parallel park. They rent to a karate shop that can barely fit enough people, you know, to get in and out. I think you take four feet, the karate shop's gone. You know, it'd be hard for them to park employees and, you know, people coming into the business. I think that's probably repeated up and down Main Street. And so, you know, I guess my question or suggestion is, has it been studied, you know, how many businesses with frontage on Main Street? What's the total number of parking spots in the areas that would be affected, up and down? And then how many of these parking spots will be removed? And what percentage of the total parking does that represent? And if that's not something that's been studied, I think it's really vital that it is. And then to look at the individual businesses and say, what, you know, is a business going to lose eighty percent of their parking? That business is gone, that the feed store, you know, I know those folks too. So, and then the other question is, what percentage of the employees and the individuals that work at these businesses arrive there via bus, bike, walking, and then by driving vehicle? My take on Main Street in this area is that it is, it'd be great if there was more public transit, biking and walking, but this is a very, very heavily vehicle traffic. I don't think McCluskey Cabinets has ever had a customer arrive by bus or bike. You know, people drive there to buy. It's people that are going to redo their kitchen. They're just not on the bus. And so I think that's something that should be studied and taken into account as well, and that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Bonnie Mogstad.
Commissioner, I have Dustin, I'm sorry, I have David Schmuck next, also on a private message.
All right, thank you. Proceed.
Good evening. You know, as a family business owner in Springfield, most of all, most all of my life, I really support this. We have to progress in making Main Street not a freeway, but a thoroughfare. And people are really concerned about parking spaces. And I know we were at first when we first heard about this, but you're only talking about increasing the roadway from eighty feet to eighty-nine feet, I think, if I'm not mistaken. And the way that and and the main areas would be the intersections, which if you look at Forty Second, if you look at all the main intersections, there will not be that much impact. And every single data measure that you can you can you can look at says that roundabouts in not only increase safety, they increase business. They slow down things and let you egress and exit businesses much more easily and much more safely. And I totally support. So I think it's I think it's a it's an excellent plan. I just can't wait for what is is ultimately decided upon for what we do. I personally like the medium strips because that in twenty in twenty fifty will give us the opportunity to put pylons up to put a monorail down Main Street.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe next up is Bon is Bonnie Mogstad?
Yeah, that's me.
Please proceed.
Okay, well, I've been following this for a while. I took two and a half hours the other night to read through as much as I could of the proposal. I think a lot of the residents have no idea what's going on. So there's a lot more outreach that needs to be done. I am totally against the Meridians, especially out in the Thurston area. It's hard enough to get on and off of Main Street as it is. And from what I'm seeing, that's not really gonna help. I agree with a lot of the people that the it's not a good thing. I'm not, I would like to have you guys read the comments. I'm not the best speaker, but I'm pretty good at writing a comment. And that's all I got to say.
Hey Bonnie, thank you very much. Next up is John Flanagan.
Hello. Yeah, I work for the Oregon Department of Forestry, thirty-one fifty Main Street. My name is John Flanagan. And I've kind of read the plan, but I'm a forester and not an engineer. So you know, our concerns might be fairly easily mitigated. We realize there's a problem on the street. And we support the goals, but we have a couple areas of concern. You know, the department, you know, we're on the north side of of Main Street on Thirty Second. And that piece, that little bit of road there serves Les Schwab, Department of Forestry and Department of Fish and Wildlife. And Department of Forestry is Emergency Services, Wildland Firefighting Organization. And we need to be sure that, you know, whatever changes are made, we're still able to access Main Street east and west, and then get off from Main Street east and west back into our our facility with a low boy. And the low boys don't track real well. So you know, kind of the concern is that with a unregulated intersection and traffic, particularly middle of the day, if we'd be able to get out in any timely manner to you know, head to wildfires. The you know, that's that's the main concern as far as as our ability to do our job, but we also have a residence on the property. And from the drawings and the plan, I can't tell, you know, just how much ground will be affected there. But it's in the southeast corner and the roundabout in phase one, you know, it could be a little bit further east and not affect our property there much at all. But in phase three, the widening of the road to eighty-eight or ninety-six feet will definitely negatively impact us there. The the traffic noise is a problem already. And there's a small yard which serves as kind of a safety barrier in the event of an accident. There's also a hedge that serves as a visual barrier and a chain link fence for security. And all those would be pretty negatively impacted or have to be removed. You know, like I said, there might be might be easy fixes to those things, but those would be our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue right now requesting to speak unless I'm missing something. Staff, can you confirm?
There are no more requests in the chat.
Thank you very much. We'll turn the time over to city staff to respond to public testimony.
I'd like to, I think Brian maybe had his hand up before. So I'd like to have Brian talk and and also Michael to address some of these comments. I'd just like to note that we have spoken or communicated with a number of the folks who spoke earlier. And we'll be addressing their comments in detail with our our comment response summaries as well.
Okay, can we start with Brian?
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Barnett, City Traffic Engineer for the City of Springfield. There were quite a number of questions or comments, and I'm sure I will overlook several. So if the chair would like to prompt me on a few of those questions, I'd be happy to respond at that time. Let me first respond to Mr. Flanagan's and let's see. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of the gentleman. Tom, Tom, excuse me, Tom Johnson at Les Schwab. The Thirty Second and Street and Main Street intersection would be receiving a roundabout per the plan's recommendation. And that roundabout can be and will be designed to preserve the accesses that both the government and the private business enjoy in the current access point they have it, which although it's private, is essentially Thirty Second Street north of of Main Street. So we can look at whatever vehicles you need to get into your facilities and out of your facilities and design the roundabout to make a very good accommodation for that. When we move into the design phase of any one project, and this comment actually applies across the entire corridor. When we move into a design phase, we will be readdressing the the community engagement for the people who are involved in that specific geographic area. So if Commissioners and the public are aware of our phasing plan that's shown in the in the facility plan, we're suggesting that our first project would be at Thirty Second Street and moving eastward to Forty Second Street. So let's just use that as a case example in in my response here. And that that would be our first project and we would engage all of the property owners and business owners in that ten block area and both sides of the intersections that would be affected by the construction. And it would be our normal practice. It's, you know, it is an Oregon Department of Transportation facility. It's their roadway. And it runs through our community. And that's a that's a happy partnership that we have with ODOT. So I have to say I'm speaking on behalf of City Springfield. I'm not speaking for ODOT. But we have a great partnership and I know that as we have done in other projects, we actually do work well together and there's good communication. So although I'm speaking for Springfield, I think I'm speaking fairly on behalf of ODOT, but they certainly can correct me if I've misspoken tonight. The engagement that we will have will be property by property, business by business. And we will be looking at what each of those interests are and what their requests are. And we will evaluate those based on the the goals and objectives that will be adopted in this plan. So there's a number of criteria or or baselines for us to make decisions on. And so, again, moving back to Thirty Second specifically, that is an intersection of significant importance for the community broadly and for those property owners immediately adjacent. So I can assure you that we will do good design work and we will come out and measure the vehicles that you need to get in there from the forestry perspective. And Les Schwab, we will make sure that the standard sixty-seven foot trailer semi truck can get in and out and make access both east and west on Main Street. I think other comments that I'd be able to address is that speaking to the phasing plan is, I think, a good one. And phasing plan talks about what can we do in the short, intermediate, and longer terms. And the initial expectation is is because of the significant cost of using doing the work in this entire corridor, there are going to be projects of limited scope that occur periodically as that funding becomes available. I can't predict what funding will be or when it will arrive or how large it will be. But my estimate at this point in time would be is that widening the roadway, moving the curbs back will not happen for many, many years because that is a very important aspect of this corridor. But it's also a costly and more impactful portion of the project work we're proposing. So I think this project, the facility plan actually was the outgrowth of the city receiving a grant from the All Roads Transportation Safety Program in which the proposal at that time was to simply install a median on Main Street. And that has the highest reduction in crashes and would have the greatest impact on improving safety in the corridor. But we also recognize that we needed to have a robust public engagement process. And Molly's done a good job of describing that, so we'll repeat that. That's what led us to do a facility plan, to consider everything in the corridor, not just the one thing. But I think that, you know, the reason I referenced that is that that funding source continues to exist. And that what we call ARCS, All Road Transportation Safety Program, is the most likely source of funds going forward. And we believe that that project will be defined most likely by a median and some roundabouts to provide the U-turn access for all vehicle sizes that is going to be necessary to keep businesses viable. So that's our, you know, that's my estimation. I believe that the plan outlines that pretty clearly. And so a widening of the roadway, which will affect the parking, as the many commenters have already said, I think that's many, many years down the road. I'm looking through the chat to see if any of these names from prompt my recollection. Yes, Mr. Highland commented that he'd already had conversations with us in the past about him being provided an access point for his business. I believe Mr. Leibler was the one who had that conversation. So I'll I'll ask him to jump in and interrupt me if I misstate the understanding that was there. But I believe that Mr. Highland's business is of such significant size and magnitude, both of square footage and of trip generation, that that would be a very good candidate for a private business rather than a public street that would have direct left turn access on to Main Street. And so I think that that's a very likely outcome. I will not sit here and promise that that will be the outcome, but I certainly think that's very likely and it certainly would be my intent. But again, we will look at that section of the corridor, talk with Mr. Highland at that time when we actually have a project with money involved. And we will go through the process of making design decisions through that through that area. Looking again at the chat. Ms. Lee, you had mentioned about having trucks parking in Main Street to make deliveries. I think that's what I understood. And if I didn't understand correctly, my apologies. It is generally acceptable to have parking in a in a business area. And I think the area you described out of, well, you have an address of five zero nine five Main Street. So in the fifty-first vicinity, I think there is sufficient business in that area to call that a business district. And that that would then then make it legal to continue to have trucks parked there to make their deliveries. Those are all of the comments that I can recall with with accuracy. So if there are other questions that you would like to send my way, Chair Landon, please do so or or have others be directed to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Is there any other additional response from city staff? Okay, Planning Commission, do you have any questions?
To
Yes, please.
There there are additional comments in the chat of individuals who may want to speak. You have not yet closed the public hearing, so it is up to you whether you'd like to take those individuals' comments or not. And I am seeing in the chat Ryan McKillop and Stan Upton are the names that I'm seeing. And I don't know if Shannon has others that were sent to her privately as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Ryan McKillop?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Very well, thank you.
I just want on the funding piece that was just mentioned about. So I have the I'm developing the five acres or starting just purchase it and develop the five acres there on the corner of Thirty Second Main. And as far as the widening of the roads, are you guys playing on purchasing that property or are you guys going to wait till development plan is submitted and then extract that from the developer at no cost to the city? So you know, my concern of that is you go down Main Street and anything that's old that has potential to be redeveloped and you're waiting because it's a long term plan, you're waiting then for all the entitlements to be borne by the developer or the owner of the property.
Thank you. This is Brian Barnett. Mr. McKillop, was your property that you're referencing, is that South Thirty Second on the southeast corner, excuse me, southwest corner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That particular partial does have the right turn lane for eastbound traffic turning right to go south on South Thirty Second. So I I would not anticipate significant, if any, right of way purchase from you. And indeed, if we have right of way that a project needs during the project development, that that project would be purchasing any land that is outside of current right of way. I think I might turn to Mr. Leibler and ask him to respond how that would go through a development review process.
Yeah, Michael, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Good, yes.
Hi, this is Michael Leibler, City of Springfield, Transportation Planning in.
Can I, sorry, I just I just want to try to maintain the rules of the public hearing if we can and be consistent. If we could take all of the public comment that there is remaining and then take staff comment, we generally don't do. We generally try to take all the public comments and then have staff response to the public comment as a whole, as opposed to a back and forth comment to comment. Of course, the commission can deviate from that norm if you all wish to do that, but I just wanted to point out the agenda procedures.
Hey, I'm still seeing one more name on the queue, Stan Upton.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Stan Upton. I've been business owner for twenty-nine years, worked at the business for thirty- business owner for twenty nine years, worked at the business for thirty five years and probably have seen more activity on Main Street than most of the people that you've had so far. Were there six days a week up until just about a year ago, a year and a half ago? There's been tremendous amount of accidents and all that stuff, but I don't know. In your research, did you go back to accidents and incidents years ago compared to the traffic amount, you know, percentage wise to what the population was thirty years ago? And and we look at a lot of the stuff that you've done so far seemed to be positive. But until people read crosswalk signs and utilize them, you're not going to gain anything by doing all this stuff. I'm sorry, you won't gain a damn thing by building, taking people's property, changing lanes and all this stuff because we have so many over the years, I've noted just in my mind, watching stuff up and down Main Street. Twenty years ago, that we we literally had a traffic stop in our parking lot at least two to three times a week. We haven't had one for two or three years. These jaywalkers, you never see a police officer stopping a jaywalker. You never see a police officer stopping these tweakers on bicycles. They jump our curb, but we've had employees leaving at night in the wintertime when it's dark and almost hit somebody in a black hoodie sweatshirt on a stingray bike jumping off the curb into our parking lot and almost get plowed by an employee of ours trying to go home. And, you know, what do you do about it? You complain. But it doesn't do a lot of good when there, there's no punishment for them. What are they going to do? Take their bike? They're not going to pay a ticket if you gave them one. You know, the the people that get stopped with commercial plates on their vehicles or the name on the side of their truck, like us as a business, they know you're going to pay the fine if you did it. And we have, we don't have traffic infractions because our people are safety minded. But the other people, a lot of the accidents that they've had on Main Street has been people disregarding the stuff that you've done so far. You can spend all the money in the world, do all the stuff in the world unless you have somebody to lead them across the street at the crosswalk and and take them across the street. You're not going to gain a thing. I'm sorry, I'm opposed to it because I've just seen over the years, I don't think it's any worse than it's ever been. Really, there's more traffic now than there used to be. There's more people, there's more businesses. There's more things going on. We've had ups and downs in the economy. Springfield's been be beat up pretty bad, being timber based over the years at times, and they'll have slow periods, you know, three or three years of downturn, three or four or five, ten years of upturn. And over the whole course of it, a lot of those things, I don't believe have improved it that much because you have so many people now that drive without driver's license or no insurance, and they don't care if they get in a wreck or anything, as long as they try to survive it, they don't really care because it didn't cost them anything. They never, they they, there's no punishment for disregarding the law. So you can spend all the money you want to. You know, you could build tunnels under the street for people to cross the street, or you can build, you know, overpasses for pedestrians. If they don't use it, you still have the chance of somebody getting a pedestrian getting ran over. Or bicycles, bicycles on the sidewalk all the time. You know, it's, it's to me, it's a pretty moot point. I mean, it's grand designs, but it's costs a lot of money. And at the end of that time, I'll bet, if I had to bet my money on it, what I've seen, just as history has proved, it won't cure anything until we get some law enforcement that makes people obey the law. A good portion of it is that right there. It's so.
Okay, Stan, we lost you, but I believe that we're pretty close to the three minute limit anyway.
Do you have one member that has spoke already and is asking for permission to speak again?
Okay, I do not object. Other members of the commission, raise your hand if you object.
For for clarification for the commission before you discuss, I want to provide information that if you reopen and change your rules of procedure to allow someone who's already spoken once to speak again, then you must allow everyone who has already spoken once to continue speaking on this topic. And so I would suggest that you think about the number of interested parties you have speaking and the time you have left for the meeting as you're having that discussion. If it's if it's reopened to one, it should be reopened to all who wish to speak again.
Understood. Feedback from committee, commission members?
Chair, I believe that since the public has opportunity to provide written comment and spoken comment to council after we, even after we make our recommendation eventually, that I don't see a need to open the the spoken record for more comment from the public.
Okay, other comment?
Chair?
Sorry, I'm not sure the procedure. I saw their hands up. I I, you know, I I mostly in line with Commissioner Salazar. However, if there are points that have not been brought up, that somebody would like to to bring up. I I can see that as point of interest, you know, Stan's Stan's point that we just heard was was certainly unique as opposed to all of the others that we heard tonight, and I value that. So to that point, if there's if there's if there's new perspective, that that could be valuable. That's just my thought.
Okay, I'm going to call for Commissioner Gill because she had her hand next up, followed by Commissioner Quavilla.
Thank you, Chair. I'm considering the request from staff that we keep the record open for a following week and I will, I will support or move that when the time is right. And with that in mind, I think that that gives more opportunity for people to submit comment during the next week and have a full, they can say as much as they want in that written testimony. So I lean against allowing a second comment from people that have already commented tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Quavilla?
Yes, exactly what Commissioner Gill said.
Okay. So as would the commission like to close the public hearing and or public record or continue the hearing and hold the record open to another day?
I think that staff would if there is an opportunity, I think that that is, since there were two additional speakers tonight, that staff would like to address those additional speakers.
Okay. Proceed. I think we're at a point where that's appropriate.
Michael?
Hello, can everybody hear and see me?
Yes.
All right. Once again, Michael Liebler, City of Springfield Transportation Planning Engineer. Our city traffic engineer, Brian Brandt, wanted me to speak a little bit towards one thirty two Thirty Second Street, Mr. McKillop. Comments in relation to development. So if the plan moves forward and it is adopted, and it'll be adopted as part of the transportation system plan as well, I believe, update. And as such, we would take a look at the individual planned cross sections through throughout the corridor when development happens. One, one thing that we are currently looking at, which we adopted as part of the TSP Development Code update, was the special street setback. That was a special setback requirement for planned future roadways or or planned future improvements. And so when the future, as as Brian Barnett expressed, in in the distant future, probably expansion of the roadway would happen, current development would look at where the the building setback according to that line would be for their development. Kind of the same as if we planned a roundabout at the corner, we would be probably looking at maybe the influence area of of the roundabout on that corner in reference to the future development and and work with the developer in terms of that land use process in in making sure that the facilities that we have planned for will go in. Other than that, it wouldn't affect the standard development process, we'd have the same kind of considerations under the development code that we would in any other area of the city. I would say that for one thirty two Thirty Second Street, it also has a little wider area right now because of the right turn pocket. And that right turn pocket may not be needed or couldn't be greatly diminished with a with a roundabout at that intersection. But it's it's one of those things that we would look at more closely at at the implementation phase of the design. So I'm I'm hoping I answered the development and how development would move forward in relation to the plan and proposed cross sections.
And then I think Brian was going to address the comments from Mr. Upton.
Okay, Brian Barnett?
Yes, thank you. I I'm a regular patron at Robert Supply for my side business, and so I'm familiar with the situation that occurs in that parking lot on Main Street, and I also access via Twenty Eighth Street to the saw shop in the back. I do understand that it is very true that there is behavioral issues that are leading to problems on Main Street and the safety thereof. And I would encourage all members of the community to reach out to the police department and request enforcement and education to occur on the corridor. There are three pillars to traffic safety, and one of them is enforcement. The other two are involving education and the final pillar is engineering. And tonight's facility plan is related directly to the engineering side. And it is well documented in various research literature that the actions that we are proposing, specifically medians and roundabouts, do have very significant reductions in crash potential. And they have been well explained inside our facility plan. And I encourage all to take a look at that information. I mentioned earlier the All Roads Transportation Safety Grant Program, and that particular grant program is what we call a jurisdictionally blind fact based selection process. So that particular set of monies is allocated based on the highest benefit to cost ratio of all projects that are in competition for that money. The benefit is measured by what is the economic value of reducing fatal crashes, severe injury crashes, minor injury crashes, and property damage only crashes. Those crashes have a generally accepted financial cost. But we view that as a reduction in cost, so therefore a benefit when we can eliminate or reduce certain types of crashes. The cost component of that benefit cost ratio or analysis is the cost of constructing the project. So there was a very significant benefit in the median component. It was about nine dollars benefit for every dollar spent in terms of crash reduction versus construction cost. So I can be very clear in articulating that we will have reduced numbers of crashes, and the reduced numbers of crashes will generate a significant savings in life and in health and in property. Apologize for the sounds here. I'll get those taken care of in a moment. I think that addresses the the overall theme that Mr. Upton was sharing and would be happy to go further if the chair has other questions you'd like me to address.
Next on the agenda is possible questions to the staff or testified from the Planning Commission. So any Planning Commission members with questions or comments to those who have testified or staff? Commissioner Quavilla?
Yeah, brief question for staff. I sent an email, oh, I believe it was about a month ago. One of the things I brought up was the reliance on traffic capability in the corridor being the primary driver of the design. And or for the so that that was primary was keeping traffic moving through the design, through the the corridor. And I was wondering if under some of the new state mandates regarding that have been coming down from the from the governor, that if if that's still operable, that traffic throughput is primarily what we're looking for in the corridor. Thanks.
Staff, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, I'll I'll be happy to start the response. Any other staff members who have better information about the governor's proposals would be welcomed. Our principal interest here in this project is to, well, you know, let me back up. We have several interests in this project. And one of them is traffic flow or traffic throughput. Another is traffic safety, and the other is economic vitality for our community. And so those three components all will be brought into balance through this, through this plan and our ultimate implementation. If we fail to provide adequate capacity for traffic flows that are present today and also will occur in the future, then we will have congestion, and with congestion, we will have more air and water pollution. So if we allow for congestion, we do have some negative impacts. It would certainly be desirable for a reduced total number of vehicles to flow through the corridor from the perspective of perhaps the environment, perhaps safety, but that also has a negative economic consequence as well. So again, we have to balance all of these things, and so that's part of what the commission is being asked to consider. And ultimately, our council will make that decision.
Yes, I I found the the message I sent, and it was the LOS, the Level of Service. It was mentioned as the prime metric for the acceptable performance of the roadway. And my thought was based on the balanced transportation goals in Oregon climate friendly and equitable policies. They seem to my thinking to put the level of service at least behind other transportation goals. So that was the, just to the comment.
Hey, it looks like Emma Newman?
Good evening, Commission. Thank you. I'm Emma Newman, the Senior Transportation Planner with the City of Springfield. I have had the honor of representing the City of Springfield on the State Rulemaking Advisory Committee for the Department of Land Conservation and Development's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking that Commissioner Quavilla is referencing. Those rules are still in development. They are anticipated for adoption in the next several months here. But after that adoption, there will need to be several years at least of implementation. My understanding with regards to the transportation performance standards being proposed in those draft rules is that it would add an additional performance measure, and there's different options as to what we could choose as a city for that additional performance measure. Level of service for motor vehicles would still be a consideration, but it would not be the only performance standard that would be used. And so there would be some changes. That being said, this facility plan did look at pedestrian level of service, but bicycle level of service and the transit elements as well. So some of the work that the state will be requesting of local jurisdictions has already been considered in some of this planning work. There may very well be other requirements that may not kind of hold up to some of the standards in the vision being described in that rulemaking, but the city has already incorporated some of those additional elements beyond just the motor vehicle level of service performance standard.
Thank you, Christina Cross. Thank you. Christina Croz.
Just a minor addition to what Emma stated. The draft rules, again, they're proposed, but the proposed climate-friendly and equitable communities rules do exempt comprehensive plan or TSP updates, which the facility plan is, from meeting the new rule requirements if they were initiated before December thirty first, twenty twenty-two and so forth. There may be changes that Springfield needs to undertake. There, you know, likely would be changes Springfield needs to undertake in the future under the new rules. But this facility plan process, if it happens to adoption, happens to overlap with those with that rulemaking in a different way, would not, this this process would not be directly subject to those rules the way that they're drafted right now.
Planning Commission, any other questions to staff or persons who have testified at this time? Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Less of a question, more of a statement to those that have testified. I just want to thank you all for taking a moment out of your evenings and stepping up and testifying. It is important for us to have your feedback, to have the feedback of the community, those that this affects. The staff has worked really hard on this, and I appreciate you for that as well, the staff. And again, I just want to reiterate for every single one of you that has testified, whether verbally or written or both, you have been heard, and thank you so much. I know that nine o'clock on a Tuesday evening is being on a Zoom. It may not be what you want to be doing, but I want you to know that it is valued and appreciated, and I thank you for that.
Amen. Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, I know we've heard a lot of concerns about some of the what we've been calling the toolbox, the tools in the toolbox for this project. And I was just wondering if staff could briefly talk to to speak to some of the alternatives that might have been explored to these specific tools that are being looked at and why the tools such as, I think you spoke to this a little bit, Brian, why the tools such as the median, why the roundabout are tools that are the the plan is leaning towards to meet the the specific goals of the project.
Can we have somebody from staff that would like to respond to that?
Yes, I'd be happy to do so. Commissioner Salazar, the facility plan utilized a consultant to do a lot of the legwork. But we do the presentation as staff. Part of that legwork was to look for resources that have information about crash reduction actions and what the results of those actions are. And the Federal Highway Administration has established what's called a clearinghouse, which is essentially a repository for hundreds of studies on safety benefits of different types of actions. And that clearinghouse and the Highway Safety Manual from Federal Highway Administration identify different ways of doing actions. And they have a very robust matrix, if you will, of what is the action? What kind of crash does it impact? Does it impact it favorably or negatively? And how about other crashes and other crashes? So there are different crash types, and I'm sorry, I should have led with that. There are rear end crashes, there's right angle crashes, there's turning movement crashes, there's head-on crashes. All of those crashes have a different set of reasons why they occur. And so there are different kinds of actions that one might take to mitigate those types of crashes. So we looked through the corridor, identified each of the crash types, and then looked through that toolbox that the Federal Highway Administration has, the Crash Modification Clearinghouse, and looked for all of those types of actions that would do well to mitigate the crash types that we experience. And we looked for those that had the highest degree of reduction in collisions. And so that's how the choices that we have identified in the plan as the preferred choices is they have, going back to the funding strategy, the highest benefit of crash reduction versus the cost of construction of the activity on the ground.
Thank you. I think it's just helpful for the public to hear why the solution or why these tools were selected. They're not just pulled out of a hat. There there's a lot of study and methodology that goes into selecting these. Thank you.
Definitely appreciate that. Are there additional questions to staff or persons who have testified? Commissioner Buck, let's start with you.
I believe Commissioner Gill's hand was up before mine.
Okay, that's fine. Commissioner Gill, I.
Okay, thank you both. This this might seem like a weird question, but I feel like it's kind of important to talk about. And I don't think that the packet quite addresses this. So and we heard from staff that some of this work was driven by grant that was received and a and study and planning work that sort of helped propel this forward. But I would be interested to hear a sort of the the direction as as Molly mentioned earlier. Staff has spent a lot of time and capacity on this. And, you know, we don't just get a report and then suddenly do something. So there's decision making by the city and city council who that have directed this work. And I I feel like that background might be helpful to understand this approach and how the how then the phasing happened. So having this this plan as the first step of, well, not the first step, like the third or fourth step of this whole process. So maybe there could be a little short summary of what those initial steps were and in the direction to put in this kind of effort for this project as a priority. And then also maybe how if staff could sort of explain how the following priorities might be set. I know as funding is available, but there's a choice to apply for that funding. So there are a lot of decisions that happen in the city and how this might land in those processes, if that makes sense. And I know that's a big thing. So if you can't fully, like, a response now would be great. But if we hold open the hearing and get to revisit this, I wouldn't mind some of that in the staff report in the future. Thanks.
Staff, do you have somebody who you'd like to take a shot at that?
Well, I think in terms of kind of what set the direction for this plan, I would point you to page pages twelve and fourteen and up to sixteen in the facility plan. You know, talking about going back to the twenty eleven Main Street Safety Study that ODOT did that was pedestrian focused. And then our Transportation System Plan Update, the Main Street Corridor Vision Plan, and then the Maine-McBay Transit Study. And then, as Brian mentioned, the Arts Award for the Raised Media. And so that kind of, I think, outlines how we got to where we are. In terms of next steps and prioritization, I would actually look to Brian to see if he has an answer on that in terms of looking at, all right, city processes. And, you know, how will we make sure that, you know, the city and ODOT in a coordinated fashion pursue funding for implementation, assuming the facility plan gets adopted?
Sir, you want to take a shot?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I alluded to the partnership that we have with ODOT previously. And that is the key component of working with our staff, with their staff, figuring out how we're going to apply for different project fundings, whether they be arts or other forms. And then, you know, using past as prologue, the city has worked very closely with ODOT and helped represent the community and city interests to ODOT. ODOT is very good at developing projects, and we're very good at working with our community. And we will, we bridge that, and that's how we bring that type of thing together. One example I can point to is that, you know, several years ago, there was a high degree of concern about pedestrian crossing safety in the corridor. And so ODOT funded a plan to look at pedestrian safety actions that could be taken. And when that plan was concluded, then they began sending money our way so that the city could actually do the design and construction management of all of the rapid flashing beacons and the pedestrian hybrid beacon out in the far east of the Main Street Corridor. So in that case, ODOT actually handed the money over to us and asked us to develop and complete the projects. And Michael Liebler is the staff member who completed that. He did a very good job of working with Councilor Merrily Woodrow and using communication with and through her to the community to help the community understand what the implications are of those projects and how we might use, do those projects with with minimal disruption and make for the the safe kinds of crossings. That's one type of small project, but there, you know, we've had other larger projects. Right now, I am the city staff liaison with ODOT regarding the fifty-fourth and Main Street Traffic Signal Upgrade. And so I will continue to represent the community and city interest with ODOT. And ODOT is responsive to that input. And so as we go forward, and let's say we do get that arts funding to do the first roundabout or the first roundabout plus a median, that will be the city role in communication and coordination, collaborating with ODOT so that we have a partnership and produce a good product.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. I I'm curious, and and maybe this, this is a question for Brian as well. You're popular tonight. So it was brought up earlier by a couple of different people about measures that we've taken. And and then I believe it was Todd Fortier said earlier that there's there's still large stretches of Main Street that don't have crosswalks. And so I guess my my question is, what have we seen? Or what is the data shown about the measures that we have put in place? So there there are some protected crosswalks along Main Street. There's there's not many, but there's a few. And I'm curious to know if there's been any data that's shown the effectiveness of those in our community and and how we're how we're looking at that. Because I felt like it was a good point that if we're going to take steps to do that, to to do all of these things and look at the toolboxes, it's nice to know that what we've already done and the direction we we'd be going has shown some effectiveness. So I'm curious about the the current crosswalks and some of the roundabouts that we have put in, because there are some in Springfield that we've we've put in. And I'm just curious if we've been able to pull some data as to how those have spoken to not only public safety, but also also traffic flow.
Sure, I'd be happy to, Commissioner Buck. We let's see. Let's let me address the crossings. And Mr. Fortio's comment about a crossing near the bus stop, near his business is a well well-placed one. That study that I mentioned that ODOT did many years ago about cross pedestrian safety did look at the different locations of bus stops as well as other pedestrian generators or attractors. And there was a very specific look at where people were doing their crossings. At that time, LTD was engaged, and there was some relocation or consolidation of bus stops to try and manage that situation better. And then, of course, the crossings were installed that were installed. And those locations were all select based on priority. To your question of was there a reduction in crashes for pedestrians? I can't answer the question definitively. And the reason for that is, I think, twofold. One is, we haven't really collected the data to really know. But it's really hard to collect that data. And the reason for that is that pedestrian crashes are very infrequent over the over a course of a year. Thankfully, they're very infrequent. But that means then that there's very little data to study. And we have had continued crashes. But what we will never know is the crash that was averted because somebody did choose to use the crossings that were provided. And so I can say I see people using those crossings. And I see drivers respecting those yellow beacons when they come on or at the pedestrian hybrid beacon out east when those red lights come on. Is their behavior perfect? By no means is it. But it is certainly better than it would be if nothing was there. Are there pedestrians who choose not to use that even fifty feet away from one? Yes, that's true. And that would be an enforcement issue, and I support having enforcement of that kind of behavior. You also mentioned roundabouts and what what effect they have. Again, the literature can point to that very, very clearly. There is a very significant reduction in vehicle-on-vehicle crashes. Pedestrian-on-vehicle crashes are low. And oftentimes, if they do occur, they occur with the vehicle traveling at a lower speed than they would at a traffic signal. And so that means that the negative outcome for the pedestrian is less negative than it might be otherwise when you're at the roundabout. In terms of, you know, Franklin roundabouts are too new for me to have any information to share. What I can say is that in two thousand and six, when the Parkway Roundabout was opened, there was a history of several significant injury accidents there. I think there were some fatal crashes there. But since two thousand and six, I am only, this is not perfect data, but I am only aware of one very significant crash that occurred there with injury. And there might have been a fatality associated with that. And that particular crash was a motorcycle fleeing police pursuit. So I consider that a bit of an outlier. It's still tragic that somebody was injured or killed. But the causation of that is frankly fairly out of our control in that type of situation. So we we have, we have improved the safety of that intersection at Parkway and Hayden Bridge significantly with that roundabout. You also ask a question about capacity. And what I can, I can use also the Parkway Roundabout as a good illustration. Parkway Roundabout carries about the same traffic volume as Pioneer Parkway Q Street. I think all of us understand the difference in your experience as a driver or as a pedestrian or as a cyclist in those those intersections. Certainly, as a driver where the volume is very high, you have a better experience at the roundabout, in my opinion. Now, some people may differ with that. But my opinion is traffic flows much more smoothly. It flows through with limited amount of delay, and it flows through at a fairly low speed. So if somebody does make an error, the consequence of that error are either avoided or the consequence of the error are very low. It's, you know, it's been a lot of years since we've had that roundabout open. And I'd say that's a very favorable record for that time period. I hope I've answered all your questions.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate appreciate that. And I and I do appreciate your comment that prevention is is one of the most difficult things to measure success because it's hard to know what did not happen. But I appreciate you being able to speak to to that the way you did.
Thank you.
Good. Planning Commission, any other questions to staff? Okay, would the commission like to close the public hearing or?
Pardon me, Chair, I did.
Pardon me, Chair, I I did have one question.
Thank you. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, in light of some of the discussion that we've heard from the public, many of them are in disagreement with the design plans. And many of them are concerned with access for trucks, loss of parking, et cetera. I read the Appendix C, which regards dispute resolution processes and protocols that in the package. And I did note a couple of things about it, one of which was that once a decision is made, it's unappealable. So that that had me a little bit concerned that if that, you know, basically it takes a dispute and removes any, once the decision is made, it says that it can't be appealed to Luba or anyone else. So if there's a legal person, maybe the city attorney could weigh in and explain why that's a good idea.
Are you looking at an access management dispute resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so that is implementing state law around access management that is not for this facility plan. So the facility plan is appealable to Luba. Specific decisions on access management related to specific properties have different processes. And so there's a process to develop key methodologies and principles that then feed into the planning process that has state law access management rules adopted by legislature associated with developing those key methodologies and principles and has that that process. And they didn't want to make that a land use decision that was separately appealable from the Transportation System Plan and Facility Plan piece of it because you could become mired in sort of a feedback loop of appeals before you ever actually get to you know, your Transportation System Plan. And then the other part of that process is specific to an individual property's access to Main Street. And so that is following the state process, and it's appealable. You know, even decisions that are not land use decisions appealable to Luba follow the same general rules for appealing a local government decision, which is a writ of review process to Circuit Court generally, or if it's an ODOT decision, it may be an appeal depending on the type of hearing. And I don't know this off the top of my head, but we could provide you more information. If you would like, sometimes those decisions that they're by stating are appealable to the Oregon Court of Appeals rather than to trial court. So there's always a way in which to appeal a government decision. It just may not be to the land use court of appeals specifically.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commission, other, any other questions? Okay, we're at the section now where it says, would the commission like to close the public hearing and or public record? Or continue the hearing and hold the record open for another date? I note that we are only deciding whether to close the record for our recommendation to the city council. Any comments submitted after the Planning Commission hearing and record are closed will be provided to the city council for their public hearing later in the spring. Commission members, comment, thoughts? Commissioner Buck?
It's my understanding that we've been asked to did I lose my feed here?
No, you're still good, still hearing you.
Okay. It's my understanding that staff is interested in us leaving the record open for at least another week. And if that's the, and I'd be in support of that.
Okay. Let's let's hear from Commissioner Salazar and then Commissioner Buck, if you want to come back and perhaps make a motion.
Commissioner Salazar? Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Buck. I think for the the reason that he mentioned, not only his staff requested an opportunity to have the 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 record open to respond to comments, but earlier in the meeting, we had someone wanting to give additional comment. And I think for that, for anyone who spoke earlier in this morning, we'd welcome your comments still. And I think if we if we hold the the record open, then we can have a chance for folks to give written record. And I did hear warmness to that earlier in the meeting.
Okay, do I hear a motion then to?
Yes, Chair, I I move to keep the record open until a future date.
Okay, motion is to keep the public record open until a future date. Do I, if you're a second?
Second.
All in favor? Bye.
It would be helpful, excuse me, this is Sandy Belson, City Staff. It'd be helpful if you could be clear on the date so that people in attendance as well as staff know when the record would be closed. So you can pick the a date that's a week out as requested by staff or whatever timeframe you choose.
Planning Commission, how far out do you want to go?
Would suggest February 22 at five o'clock.
Okay.
Will work for me. I can amend my motion.
Please.
I I I move to keep the record open till February 22 at 5:00 PM.
Okay, motion is to keep the public record open until the 22nd, 5:00 PM. All in favor? I any opposed? No, five in favor, none opposed. So we'll keep public record open until the 22nd. Let's see. I believe that that finishes that subject. Christina?
Did you close the public hearing? Okay.
Okay, I probably need to do that. Move to close the public hearing and public record? No, we're going to continue until another date. Is that correct, Christina, if I'm doing that correctly?
If you've left the rec written record open only, then I would expect that you would not continue the public hearing. Continuing the public hearing is for more oral testimony in another hearing like this. Whereas the record is just when you cut off the time for the public to submit comments to you. I do want to note for the benefit of the public that because there is a future city council hearing on this matter, if any public comment is submitted to staff after the Planning Commission record is closed, then that public comment will go forward to the city council. It just won't be reflected in the Planning Commission's recommendation. So it's not, one week is not the deadline for the public to provide comment to the city. It's just what you've decided to use as your cutoff for what you're going to look at in your decision making. But I would recommend that you close your public hearing.
Okay, so Christina, help me with a with a verbiage on this thing. Then the motion would be to close the public hearing, but keep the public record open. Does that sound right? I think I lost you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Gill's got it, so I'm gonna let her.
Okay, Commissioner Gill.
Yeah, so I think we already voted on the public record part, so I knew that we closed the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
And I'll second, Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to get this right eventually. All in favor? Unanimous. So the public hearing is closed. And Commissioner Salazar, did you have additional comment?
No, that covered it. Thank you.
Okay. I think that completes that item of business. Christina, does that sound correct to you?
Yes, I think you've concluded that item of business.
Thank you very much. Do we have any commissioners with a report on a city council meeting? Any other business from members of the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Any business from the department and Development and Public Works Department?
Good evening, Commissioners. Sandy Belson, the interim planning manager. And I do want to remind you that at your last meeting, you did select Planning Commission leadership. And so Chair Landen, this is your first meeting as chairperson. But there was one position you did not select at that time because you had selected Commissioner Buck, and he was not there to accept it. So you may want to address that this evening for the council liaison position.
Okay. Nominate Commissioner Buck for council liaison. If I said that correctly, Sandy?
Yes.
Do I have a, do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Quavilla, all in, do you accept the nomination, Commissioner Buck?
I can you help clarify what it, what it is I'm being nominated for? It would be to attend city council meetings and report back to this commission.
Sandy?
Well, each count, each commissioner has actually been asked to attend the council meetings on a rotating basis. And the schedule for that is posted in the Springfield, Oregon speaks on the Planning Commissioner page. But the council liaison really is to liaise directly with the person from the council. In this case, Counselor Pitts, just to, if there's anything to discuss between the Planning Commission and the council or to if there's a particular item that's coming up that needs attention, and you wanted to make sure that it's communicating that with Counselor Pitts or whoever the council liaison is. I believe that Commissioner Gill had been the liaison previous, so she can maybe add.
Commissioner Gill?
Thank you. Yes, I served in this role for the last year. It is a very low maintenance position. Counselor Pitts and I have had some email conversations periodically when there is something on the agenda that's going to go to city council that, like today, I will follow up with him and encourage him to be sure to look at the public comments because we've gotten so many things like that. So it really, it's it's a periodic email essentially just to check in and make sure that I offer to respond to any questions or if he has any concerns about how things are going or what we're doing or wants to learn more about it. And then just sort of highlight, I really recommend that you look at these comments because we haven't heard them before, things like that. So it's pretty low key.
Right. Sounds good. I can accept that.
All in favor?
I would recommend that you, you know, reach out to Counselor Pitts and see what, it's really between the two of you, what works best on how you communicate, how frequently and such. So if if voted in by the rest of the Planning Commission, I encourage you to follow up and and get specifics with him.
Okay, I'm doing one of those senior moments. Did we vote on that yet or not? All in favor of Commissioner Buck acting as the liaison to the city council? Unanimous, Commissioner Buck and voted also voted for himself, which is really, really good. So it's not getting stuck army style. So congratulations. Any other business from the Department of Public Works?
Yes, one more item, actually, too, as I'm thinking about it. As you know, Brenda Jones has retired, and we are having an event for her on Friday to which you all are invited. So you should have an email about that. And if you want to follow up, you can follow up with me or Shannon. But we want to honor her 28 years of service for the city. And then finally, you have a special meeting next week to continue the deliberations on the development code. So that is Wednesday, February 23, starting at 6:00 PM. And hopeful that maybe you can wrap up your deliberations that night, although you're not required to finish that evening, but it would be wonderful if we could get there.
Indeed. All right, well. Seeing no other hands, I thank everybody, and the meeting is adjourned.